Okay, I think we're all right then. I always get stuff messed up.
I just want you to do it.
I call a word in the May 21st, 2013 meeting of the MC Council. Please stand at the hand of the key and vote for my team.
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their deeds, help them to do right, to deal fairly with others, and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's live as students alike, out of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Everyone should have a copy of the May 7th, 2013 meeting minutes, if any errors are missed. Stand as presented. Your Communications Proclamation, you read? It's proclamation for nursing assistance week 2013. Whereas nursing homes, home care, and other long-term care agencies have accepted responsibility to provide quality care for all the elderly, the frail, and disabled citizens in our community. Whereas well-being and happiness of these citizens depend in large part on the nursing assistance, home care aides, patient care assistants, and others who provide eighty-five to ninety percent of the daily and on care in nursing homes and other long-term care settings. Whereas these career nursing assistants are instrumental in promoting and safeguarding the physical, mental, emotional, spiritual well-being of the residents, clients, and their families. Whereas career nursing assistants are trained professionals who collaborate closely with other healthcare providers to provide quality care and elevate the status of those of their chosen profession. Now therefore, I, Davis Fable, Mayor of the City of Columbia, by authority vested in me, do hereby declare 13th and 20th, 2013, as Thirty-Sixth Annual National Nursing Assistance Week 2013, nursing assistance at the heart of care. I urge all citizens to join with me and others nationwide to celebrate the Thirty-Sixth Annual Observance of Nursing Assistance Week to express encouragement and appreciation for the services provided by these caregivers in the public good. And to report some commissions and boards, everyone should have a copy of the Civil Service Commission Meeting Minutes of March 23rd, 2013, Civil Service Commission Meeting Minutes of April 11th, 2013, Civil Service Commission Meeting Minutes of May 15th, 2013, and the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of May 14th, 2013. Any comments on any of these?
I have one comment on the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. It looks to me like the whole last paragraph on page two. I was in the meeting last week because there were several of you, and it leaves out any and all of the discussion both between myself and Mr. Straherich, as well as the comments made by Mr. Lawan at the end, where it just says, "The building stated loading off the driveway to property owners does not need permission to install driveway." Commission members concurred there was not a planning or zoning issue. First of all, I think Mr. Lawan suggested we don't need, he thought that there was an issue with that. That's not in here, nor is the fact that I asked the Planning Commission for the physical plan of what was going on, both with this development and the goings-on of this code doc, as well as specifics of the plan in general for businesses coming through the area and what was going on. And it wasn't given. And none of that conversation is in here at all. So it's not my place to amend those minutes, and I definitely had a question.
Okay, the comment can be passed on the Planning Commission in his next meeting. Verified, that can be added to it. Any other comments? Okay, and recognition persons considering the Speaker of the Council tonight. On the agenda is Mr. Ron Detlawler, Park Board President, concerning a Park Board report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
What I wanted to do tonight is give you an update as to what's going on at Park, and ask for a few things from Council, and also get your blessing on some of the things we're doing. Obviously, the number-one project in the forefront this time is finishing up the fence that was started around Firestone State. I'm sure all of you've had the opportunity to visit the stadium down there, you can see what the fence looks like at this point in time. The state we made last year was starting too late, thinking we could be done before football started, and that didn't happen. The other point with that project at the time was I wouldn't really let it go ahead unless they had the money to finish it, so that's probably the reason it's kind of been there, collecting money to do that. So you know, more informational than anything else, we plan to start, we plan on resurrecting the project after Memorial Day. And the plan at this point in time, we did receive the money, the donations for the new entrance and the ticket booth. We plan on, after Memorial Day, tearing down the old ticket booth there, doing the cement work, and having the entrance ticket booth done before the Fourth of July festivities in the park. And then, we're going to do just like we did last year with the section of the fence, start on the other side, and go around, and fix the fence through the summer, and be ready to go by football season. Couple things, we've got real good support. We spent the winter collecting money, we've had some good donations come in, and we have a large donation from the school. Also, the majority of our donations have been from alumni. And we plan on sending the mailing out, that will be going out any day now, to all of the alumni from the school. And I will say, that's where the majority of our money has come from so far. We've got an application in the community foundation, the Park Board has earmarked some money. But most of the money for this project is coming from mailing out. So that mailing will go out, and we're going to still stick to the theory that when the money comes in, we're going to do it, do anything, unless the money's there, we're going to shuffle the funds. One thing I would like to ask Council, and I've already talked to Lance about this, and Terry Shaffer, a lot of the monies that, we're getting a lot of in-kind donations also, like the foundation work that's being done is being donated by alumni. And the entire roof on the entrance and ticket booth is being donated by one of the contractors from the school, from Dixon. And all part of the cement work, the stone work, the cement work, the footers, and the cement rebar and that, again, it was supposed to be donated by a local contractor. What I'd like to do, and I'm talking to Lance about, he's had a couple blessings on this, but Terry has assured us that the park people, or staffs at Park, and some of the people from the water department can tear that ticket booth down and all away, and cut up the cement so we're ready to put the foundation in. So I wanted to let Council know that you're headed in that direction, if you have any opposition to that, let me know now before we go into further. But Terry has asked that we at least wait till after Memorial Day, because it is half the time in place. But that's what we plan to do, if there's any problems with that, let me know now. As I said, we've had good support, so right now, I'm very positive, I don't think there's any opposition to the project. As you know, there's a committee that was formed last year, Brian was on the committee, and also Keith. We will have to re-convince and have one more meeting in early June. I would assume that Lance will take Keith's spot, and I'm hoping that Brian will also be on the committee, so we're looking at one more meeting in early June. Any questions on the fence, for everyone?
Alan will take the note.
Oh, just a little. So it's a one-day run?
We had, history, when we did the press bars, the city did the workforce, helping us hit the old, went out of there, and also, there needed grounds so you could do the foundation. They actually dug the footers and did the foundation work, and it was literally a couple days to do that. Jay was there at that time, and the city was very gracious, and they helped us. And as I said, these are donations. We're trying to do this project so it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, it's not costing the school any money, it's through donations from alumni and businesses. As I told you the last time I was here, no guarantees, I won't know what we're into until we're further along, but I, right now, feel very positive we'll be able to pull it off without coming to Council or to the school for money. And as I said, the school already gave us a very generous donation to start with, so I'm very pleased with that also. So, so you know, you see tractors and back those things everywhere, especially if they're yours. Another thing that we're doing that I want you to be aware of, so you'll know it's coming, the facilities at the park, I think it's overlooked in this community, how much that park had used. We had an issue over the last couple months, not only are we at a point now that we're scheduling events on days, but we're scheduling two, three, four events at the same time, on the same day, and we're having some problems with that. The Park Board's in the process of revisiting some rules and regulations for the events in the park. Our biggest hassle is football, obviously, with the new press box and those facilities. So we're working on that now, and we're going to need a little bit of help, and ultimately, it's going to need to be passed by Council. So our timeframe is, we're working on it now, we're going to finalize in June at the Park Board meeting, the final rules and regs, then we will send them to Council, who ultimately has to pass those. And there are things like with the press bars, as you know, there's twelve rooms in there, and there are certain football games where there's more people in those rooms than there are in the standard rooms. So we're going to contact the fire chief, and we're going to have some occupancy rules. Parking is horrible, you can have huge parking lots all over the place, but people still want to park in the grass. If it rains, that's a problem, and if you get a big game like Miami on a rescue, it's really caused us some problems over the last couple years. So those are some of the regulations we're going to have. The new restroom facility down there, fantastic for the people that are visiting the park, but it's a maintenance nightmare. So those are the types of rules and policies and regulations that we're talking about. So we will be contacting the fire chief, and we're going to revise those rules, they'll come to Council, and you'll have a chance to edit, read, add, do whatever you want, but ultimately, we'd like to have that passed by the line before football season starts. One last comment, I want to thank Council, we had a park board meeting last night, and we discussed this, as you know, we had an issue over the last couple months about a conflict that programs in the park. And we had to make a very difficult decision on turning somebody away that wanted to have an event in the park. We spent a lot of time, Lance spent a lot of time, we did different meetings, and no matter what happens in a situation like that, there's always something that's unhappy. But our points on the Park Board, we want to thank Council for your support. If you backed up our decision, it was well-founded, well thought out, and we appreciate your support. Can I answer any questions?
I think the Park Board does a wonderful job, we support it because it do make great decisions, a lot of the great force, a great investment. Continue the good work, it's not like a lot of things going on, you can continue working on it.
We have a Park Board that's been in place for a number of years now, personally, I feel, I've even had individuals try to drop off, I feel that they do a tremendous job. We have one individual, like the Parks Desk, we have one Park Board member that's in charge of that desk, we have one member that's in charge of the management of the park, and we have one individual that's doing the fence, and it's expanding, and it works, I mean, and they're dedicated. And I know we've had some issues in the past, but sometimes they don't feel appreciated, so it's nice that Council has. And Lance has been good worker, and that's been very, very good for us, and he's been at several of our meetings, and he's done whatever we've asked him to do, and he's been very receptive, and he's learned a long way, and so I'm very pleased with that.
Just a side note, I know you're asking a comment on Comcast and their dedication to park and volunteers have helped out that day. Since then, Heartland went down, and they have people from K through twelve, and the list of things they did was a lot.
Heartland actually booked their day for next year already, so they're coming back.
It's great to have something like that.
That helps us out. And the other point is too, I think we overlook the job that Terry Shaffer and his boys do. We hear the criticism, I had four phone calls from Park Board over the weekend, and especially this time of the year, if it rains, mowing, grass, and so many things going on, it's hard for that staff to get that job done. But they do a good job. Again, as a Park Board, do they have to listen to us? No, but they do, whatever, whatever we ask them to do, they do, they promise. The other thing I'll mention, we did pass last night, and talking about new projects, we're going to have a big-time dog show in the Park town this fall, Penn Ohio, a county club, we've done this in the past, and there's a lot of strings attached to this one. But talk about bringing in new programs that have been put on in big venues, we approved that last night, so once again, an area, and we do this draft off, I never, but again, they're going through the park and the city, so we need to talk to the police department and things like that, but it's one example of new program, if you want to come in, if you want to use our system. And the gentleman came to us, we asked him, "Why did you come to Miami?" And he said, "Well, look at your facility." He said, "This rivals some of the best events," so that makes us. Any questions? Do you know? Anything?
Next person we want to speak to Council, he asked earlier, Dan Mills, concerning the floral warehouse on Springfield Road, and the open burning.
I'm here for, excuse me, I'm in the west, and Dan Metzger has written a letter to Brian, and you all have a copy of it. The plane left here, checked it out, he came up with an excuse, and it was a cold for us, making the smoke, now it's not the cold for us, not the summer time, you know, the cold.
Who told you that?
The patrolman called, my other people was in paper last year, but a patrolman went out, scattered, and they called in the coal furnace, and they're coming, and the smoke gets pretty bad, Brian's saying, and we've got all of these. The general's over here, and that is, we're right across the street practically from him. Brian said he knows one time when the smoke coming up across the street. Medical center, and it gives the medical center just a little bit of cover, at least a couple of of our units. And every morning when I get up in the morning, I open the garage door, and full of footers, when the smoke stinks, it's in the house, you can't, can't open it because he's burning. And what he's burning is probably flowers, they're probably wet, because he has to keep them wet from the door until he can do a celebration of it, so I imagine that's what they are, and that's where a lot of us come. His incinerator doesn't break it down currently, so EPA is not liking too well, they have to come out and show, and we're going to follow up with the EPA, thinking that it's not going to enable the Council to do something to get it stopped. It's hard on me, and I'm really, and I know that others out there are the same way, the perfectly every business place is down, especially almost every business is down, and it's gone through, and they get rid of their trash, and it goes out of town, and we don't have the stuff. And we've got a nice town, we like to keep it that way, and it seems like during the night and the morning, most of the wind is coming, and that's on the east end of town. Another company, a firm's been there a long time, I don't know what they're doing different now, but we need some action, we appreciate it, we want you to look into it, see what you can. I know that EPA rules, and I also understand the Miami, burning regulation, we probably take care of, if we're to force, it seems to be that we can't have this thing going on, it's not worth it.
Gee, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, can I ask, have we been called, has the police department called out there before?
Not to my knowledge, I'm not aware of it, but the gentleman's speaking on terms of a complaint. Miami on the floor, I know where you're talking, Mr., what was the complaint, do you remember?
Well, I think this is the first complaint this year, they just got back from Florida, and it was last fall, it was really bad, and we're in.
I got calls last, last summer from Dan Metzger, and I spoke to Keith about it, and I think he went and met with them over there, and it wrong stopped for a little while, and then it came again.
That's possible, if most of the ordinances that we deal with involve open burning, which involves things that happen outdoors, there isn't a lot that we enforce in terms of an incinerator, a chimney, a coal furnace, a wood furnace, that comes from inside a building. I didn't look forward to that to see, but if anything, we have in terms of enforcement authority, and the Ohio EPA or federal EPA may be a better venue for that, we certainly look into it, see if there's anything we can do to help, but if this program has to talk ahead a little, where are anything that we can do to this open burning out of the square? And even cooking fires are proven, pardon the word.
Witnessed, then, what does it give you an idea of what it looked like? After I got the call, I hadn't seen it, I was driving down the road one day, and there's like a yellow, it looks like a wall thick, it was just, it was not really seeping out from the back of their place, but through the whole, the medical pavilion that's there that's selling hospital, the whole parking lot was full, and then how, how did the roads and the corner, you physically couldn't see. At that point, I knew instantly what it was, because I'd received a call, and I called Keith, and I know he went and met with them, and it stopped for a while, but he's back here.
But I think it would be, because it was hollowed away myself, I would have noticed that, I've been, it was in the paper, and Russian township residents who were detecting the open burning, and one paragraph down there, he noted, "Ohio EPA restrictions..." And in one paragraph there, he noted, you know, Ohio EPA restricts burning within 1,000 people and inhabited neighborhoods. And the fire department has been approximately 200 different people in this zone. In that particular, incident, EPA was out. And I know that it's probably some people that don't even smell it. They live in the back part of the units. But the front units get it all. The thing is the medical building would get in, from up the hall right up through there. And I just blow up your car and it smells like it's burned a little there already. Appreciate it. Something done with it. If you can't.
Well, we're looking into it. I think Lance and the police chief probably are building a spectrum and look into it and investigate and see what was going on and that. And I noticed Jan Metzger's numbers on here. He wants, he wants them to contact her or he wants to contact yourself or?
Contact her, you can contact me. Hot phone numbers, 482-5487.
5487. Okay.
Trying to get something done with that.
Throw me your name again?
Van Mills.
Hard.
Van, like in moving van.
Hard.
Thank you, sir. I'm lying, Mr. Miller. Jim had work tonight. This has been going on for about six years. And we're directly across the border. And early in the mornings, late at night, 11:30 at night, they start burning early in the morning, 6:00. And I don't know whether it was a fire out when they're burning or what, was it throwing water out, but that's when all the smoke comes out. It's not burning coal. I'm over 70. I never worked coal smelter. I never worked wood smelter. It's not, it's not either one. I'm guessing boxes and fire stands.
Give our people a chance. This, I'll be honest, this is the first I've heard of it. I didn't know anything about it previously unless I didn't recall. As far as I know, but we will investigate it and we will get in contact with.
I don't know if he's got the word of it or what, because somebody's told him when we were coming up there and off. He hasn't burned for two or four days.
Well, let's go investigate it. Probably should have. Anyone else who's already speaking counsel this evening? Yes, sir. Come up and state your name and address when they get recorded, please.
My name is Larry Penel. I'm a resident of Bear Rock, H. 326. And why are we allowing residents to hear from you? We went to zoning when you asked me. And we still have a problem. They put in, they call it a driveway. The driveway's drinking the lake. And one, we figured that would be a zoning issue. You know, how can you have a driveway and put boats into a lake? And the question about the park, and they said that would be a problem, but it's a single factor. So if you've got to turn your boat to go in, you've got to turn it around in the street. And every time you turn around the street, you've got to block the street. And last week we heard that we'd love to have an efficient tournament to meet. And when you're letting boats, I get, I think it was entered. When I meet 11 times, that street's gonna be blocked. Because where they're gonna park the trailers, we never need to enter. And I think that's what council and the park are saying about the plan. We don't have. It's a lake, you bought it there. As a private owner, you can show it, you got a description. Now we know there's a new owner and I guess the descriptions are out the window. But we figured that would be a business and you're charging people to fish there for a contest and you're charging these residents $500 to fish in a lake if they live there. And again, you know, that would be a station of worth and carry a particular amount of insurance, $600 to fish. So that's what we're having. We are concerned about the boats, you know, in the dock, the noise. I guess there are going to be motor boats, some of them. I haven't heard just these or anything like that. But that's it. And we just want to make the council, they're going to help us.
And there was a lot of discussion about it at the planning commission meeting and some of the concerns were addressed as far as today's fishing tournament. Mr. Strer said he talked to the police chief concerning having some auxiliaries or explorers down there to control the parking and the traffic situation for that day. As far as other times?
Right, that's what we're concerned about. I mean, from my understanding, that's not going to be the only fishing tournament. Maybe the first one.
Well, the way I understand it, when they had tournaments, were there to be a large amount of boats going in and out?
But what can we say, have to go in? I'm, I'm just guessing. I don't know, saying, wouldn't that have to be going to some meetings with neighbors, with neighborhood, community or?
Well, normally when the event comes to town, say for instance, they're having wine tasting on, who's straight clients. They came to the council and explained what they want to do and I think they've already talked to the police chief concerning traffic, all of that. So they've made a plan and are working with the community and the police department to make sure it's not an issue. So like I said, planning this meeting, if there's an issue as far as, it will be blocked or a safety issue or anything like that, our chief, he will take care of it. He'll make sure.
We do believe that safety, as far as like maybe wine tasting and you have wine, you know, so you throw bottles with the glasses. You can't remove the cement driveway to go into the water. And that's mainly what we're concerned about. Again, I don't know if you just respect for anything like that or just anything.
No, we understand your concerns.
A lot of the neighbors and people, I have residents of Bear Rock, they're coming up to me now, we have some people who want to move. They just want to move in here for. You know, we're just asking the council, if people are looking at, if they call this fine, if they can't, at least make sure what you said, you know, the park is at the noise level.
I promise you that they are an excellent police chief and he will look into any safety issues out there concerning traffic.
Well, is this something that, maybe I should address this to Dan, that should be resolved between the owner and the residents? Does council, should council get involved in?
I think what the mayor suggested appropriate this point, I'm not familiar with the issue. So I can examine, get the base and make some of the conversation. And after the meeting last week, wasn't so much this individual's turn. I know that it bothers somebody, but the bigger issue to the residents is the long term.
The longer you just go to the lake and play.
With this, is it a business? Are they selling permits to cover costs or whatever else? And so what I was to ask was, I mean, there was a couple of young guys that came into the planning commission meeting last week and were real. What are you going to do with this business? What are you going to fix? What are you going to sell? How long are you going to do it? And to answer these questions in order for the, to get the blessing of the planning commission. This was all done with no one's blessing. And in that of the fact, it was, oh, we're putting a driveway on a dock, we don't need permission. And then we're going back to, we're doing this for Heartland Christian, which I think is a good cause. So I think no one, no one was asked. So with the wine tasting, and we were asked, with this one, we were not. It was just done. And I think that maybe that, that's where some of the issues come in with, is it because of the individual who's doing it that the questions aren't being asked? Is it because it's a lake in the middle of a residence that no appeals that they need to ask? I'm, I'm not trying to speak for you, but that's what I got from it. Is that what the issue is? So I, I can't speak to the relationships between the residents and the developer. We should be able to speak to the plan, which is what I suggested last Tuesday. A planning commission is to have a plan for how, how things go. And there are rules for that. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with knowing the long-term goal of it. I don't think you need to be specific, Mr. Strer. But I, I do think that the city has a explanation. And that's why we have zoning. That's why we have the planning commission and why we authorize that, right?
I agree with that.
So I, I think that's where the issue is. I don't think it's a matter of can we do this? It's a matter of can you do it without asking?
Without it.
And if, if so, what's the plan? I mean, there's nowhere really in there to park. Last week, we discussed the selling permits, right? 25, 30 permits a year. It's not a lot.
Why don't you get a chance, I guess, and then address it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Let Mr. Penel go to the clerics.
All right, sir, you finished? Go ahead.
Can I ask one question? I'm looking at, we live on the lake and we walk there, we're in San Diego and we walk there as a peaceful quiet lake because we were told that only electric motor boats and motor boats and snow boats would be allowed there. I would just like to know what we're dealing with. They have been very kind and talking to me, but then I'm getting, it's not clear what's, what is happening.
Hopefully, Mrs. Strer can answer some of that right now.
So I, I am concerned about who the birds and the testes. I think my, my, this is a small lake.
Yeah, I can't sit still. All this going on. Part of the, I just want to say that we have two competing issues here. And, and one is what is allowed, what the property owner is allowed by the planning commission and our council or the city per se. The other problem, the other problems are what is bugging the residents with respect to their relationship with the developer, Mr. StruHerrick? Now, those are civil issues. Those are not issues that are, that are within the realm of the planning commission or the zoning board or the city council for that matter. And, and the two are becoming confused. And I just wanted to make that point so that we don't end up going through a laws of rank about what somebody is doing and who can do what. I just wanted to make the point that with respect to the, the driveway or whatever you want to call it, my, my personal feeling was that was a bad place to put it and it should never have been put in. And it was put in without any, without any permission from any, any civic or city or commission or board or council. Unfortunately, Mr. StruHerrick was told and there, there's kind of a confusion of whether it's just a driveway or whether it's a boat loading ramp. By our own ordinances, a property owner has every right to put in a driveway on his property. Now, the prop, that property is owned by Mr. StruHerrick. So they call it a driveway. Well, if you're going to, if it's only used for loading or unloading boats from trailers onto the lake, to my way of thinking, that is not a driveway. That is a ramp. That is a loading ramp. And as it turns out, a boat loading ramp or unloading ramp, whichever way you want to state it. And so I just want to make it, make the distinction between the two problems. One is the problem of the driveway or loading ramp, whichever you want to call it. And the other is all the other issues that are taking place between Mr. StruHerrick and the residents out there with respect to the use of the lake. We have no authority on that, as far as I know, unless I'm wrong. Am I incorrect or incorrect in saying that?
You all know a lot more about this than I do.
No, I mean with respect to the, to the use of the, okay.
I don't know exactly what they're doing. I haven't seen it. Before I make the pronouncements, ask me whether or not it's within the purview of the council or the zoning law of the city. I would want to see it first.
Yeah, you're, well, you're getting to the, you're confusing the issue also. You already, you're looking at the driveway. I'm talking about.
I haven't looked at anything.
What I was referring to is, is whatever issues the residents have with the, with the owner of the lake, that's a, that's a civil issue.
Why do we let the owner speak?
Sir, I don't think my issue is that with the owner of the lake. My issue is, I'm asking, is there noise levels or, like I said, I was told that that lake was not for anybody. I don't know that's what they have planned. That's just.
That's what he's saying, he can't get involved in.
You can if it's, if it is city, that's the level. They can't come in and build a big giant plant in the middle of that lake and say it's getting a lot. If it's noisy and there's can, no dust on that lake, it is, it might be very noisy.
There are, there are ordinances under most. We do have an ordinance with respect to noise, dust, dirt.
That's all I want to know.
Anything like that. That, that is the one ordinance we do have. But unless it's, but unless that occurs and there's a complaint, then it's a matter of enforcement.
I think everyone that lives around that lake and has been used on that, that's, that's what I'm asking. I've heard a couple of different answers and I just.
I will, I will add one thing to this discussion. Most developments, whether it's a lake of that sort, it's customary for deep restrictions to exist with regard to use of the lake. I don't know what your deep restrictions are or if they exist, so that's a possibility. But I'm sure Mr. StruHerrick can address these issues and why don't you let him speak?
Counsel, good evening. As far as the lake and addressing some of the issues on it, we are the owners of the lake. It is a piece of private property. It's on a lot. It's 35 acres and it's big enough to jet ski on it, wakeboard on it, water ski. It's very, you know, many, many things you can do. You can use electric motor on it, you can use a ten horsepower motor on it, you can go fishing on it, you can do whatever you want to. As far as, Brian, your comments are, we do not know what the long-term, our long-term goals are. We didn't purchase the lake and put a amusement park on it, you know, have boats on it. The boats are going in, as I explained last time, I can't believe that we're at this point, okay? I explained last time, these fishing boats are all tournament fishing boats. They're all bass boats, they're all semi-prots that are going to be here. I'm, I'm speaking, okay? They're, they're bass boats, they are tournament boats. We discussed this three weeks ago. They're going to have electric motors on them, they are going fast on the lake, okay? They're going to have buoys set up on the lake. You're going to go from one buoy, fish that buoy. When you get paid, you go to the next buoy, fish that buoy, you go around the lake fishing. So that's what we're doing. We have talked to the police chief, we have auxiliary help there. This was parking. We have permission from a couple of the facilities around town, commercial places and parks. Boats are going in at 6:00 in the morning, the pros are fishing till 1:00, we have to weigh in. At that time, we're going to have people there dropping the boats, putting them in, drivers taking the boats over to the commercial piece of property, have them picked up, come back over, and next group will get put in the water. And that's what we're going to do. We're just going to shuttle them back and forth. We have a bulk part that we're going to take. Kids will be fishing, there's a fishing tournament for the children. They will be fishing, they'll be supervised. There's groups that'll be there to help as far as the kids fishing. They're going to be educational, things around the facility there. As far as, you know, going back and forth with, with the associations, we went into that development under great terms with the associations. We cut grass there, we've taken trees down, we clean trees that have fallen down, we keeping everything organized and I think we've done our, we've been a good neighbor within that development. The cost of units have gone up. Home savings sold a tremendous amount of units in there. I don't think anybody's values have depreciated since we've been there, I think they escalated quite a bit. So as far as that goes, I think we are very good neighbors in that area. As far as, you know, working with the associations, some of the groups were not making money. It's not a business. And we got into this, we requested a tough charge on the premium from a million dollars that Home Savings had to an escalated amount to cover ourselves. We wanted to be named on the insurance policy, as I stated before. That never took place. My son has requested a meeting with the associations two or three times in the last week. Nobody has time for it. They got a meeting tomorrow night, it's whatever time it is. We request that they come, they don't have time for them to be there. So I'm tired of hearing that we will not be a good neighbor to the associations because we are.
I know, sir. And again, this is, that's a civil thing with you guys.
I understand, I mean, you, you're kind of fueling them a little bit. Well, because what you were saying. So mankind, I don't want to go there.
So, mankind, I don't want to go there. So, one, all I'm saying is.
You, you told me that, I want to know, you just said that I said that.
No, you're, you're, you're bringing up again that we don't have a long-term goal. I don't have a, you have a long-term goal?
Let's not have a long-term goal.
I'm just saying, you have a long-term goal for your backyard? I don't know what our long-term goal is. My kids are living there.
You own a business, sir. You spent, you, you said during the planning commission, you spent a million dollars on the lake, right? You don't want it without having a goal?
I had, you know what my goal was? It was up for sale with Home Savings. I spent millions of dollars at Old Sabre. It's sixteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars an acre buying property. I have five hundred thousand dollars sitting in the ground though that have been improvements, but sanitary than water, okay? Arrowhead was for sale for a million dollars for a hundred acres and sixty lots of the city that were already improved. If I wouldn't have bought it, do the math, if you got sixty lots into a million dollars, they're going to suffer about maybe five, six thousand bucks a lot, which would have been extreme competition for Old Sabre. Would have probably put us under, if the developer had came in and put the same house we are on a five thousand dollar lot versus a thirty thousand dollar lot, okay? So, that's why we bought. We had a plan. For the lake, I do not have a plan, okay? My kids want an acreage, I'm building my daughter's house on seven acres, my son has an acreage in back. They're not putting condos and villas around the back of the lake. That is for sure.
And I don't care what you do on the lake. What I care about is whenever you're saying you're selling permits to use the lake, which is covering insurance.
Light, our insurance cost was six thousand dollars.
But you still, if you're charging somebody something, no different than the guys that are selling computer products here last week, or charging somebody something, they have to ask to do that, correct?
They want.
You never did. That's, that's my problem, it has absolutely nothing to do with what you're doing for that one day.
We came up.
Long-term plan.
Well, the long-term plan is people want to fish on the lake, okay? Long-term plan is you need insurance to cover our insurance expense of about six or seven thousand dollars a year, okay? We are selling permits for people that want to use the lake or an association, like if one association is using the lake, they're paying a couple thousand dollars for it to help us on the insurance on it. That's all we asked from the beginning. They had a five-year lease with Home Savings, we honored it. We wanted to honor it, all we requested was insurance and us to be named on it, it didn't take place. So, at that point, I spent fifteen thousand dollars with legal counsel to decide what we were going to do with it as far as insurance, non-insurance. I've had Erie Insurance and I have other insurance companies that says you need this much money to cover yourselves. A million dollars won't even cover an attorney's bill, you know, in this age. Before, maybe yes, but not now. So, that's all I'm going, I said, it's a good cause, we're working for it. I've heard people tell me we want it for right up, we want this one day. No, we're trying to help helping Christian school, okay?
So, you call all these people, it's a one-day thing?
It is a one-day thing for that tournament that day. It's from six in the morning till one in the afternoon.
And then you can seal that boat ramp off.
I'm not saying you got to seal it.
The driveway.
Seal the boat ramp, the driving, whatever it is, it's a piece of property that is owned by me, okay? So, I don't care what it is, if it's a one-day or whatever. If those people, if those people in the association want to pull their boats in and not using that, they have permission to do it. We're not selling permits to all of Columbia, okay? We made that commitment, we're just keeping it within that association, whoever lives on the water.
Well, let me ask you a question, Mr. Tru Harry.
Just tell me, Bob, I mean.
Okay, Bob. How, how could you say that is a driveway if it drives into the lake?
I'm not saying it's a driveway or if it's a, it's a boat ramp. I don't, it's, it, whatever it is, it doesn't matter. It's putting boats in, it's making people safer, it's making the people that have paid for permits or want to use it, the people that they decided they want to spend money for an insurance policy, they want to put their boats in and out of it, they have permission to do it.
All right, to put a boat ramp in, if we're going to call it a boat ramp?
Well, let's, there's nothing to catch up to. I think Dan needs to get involved, since this is the person concerned about, he needs to, uh, visit this as soon as possible and see exactly what we're talking about more of all.
Because if it is a boat ramp, my question is, did they need to come before council to get approval to put it in?
It would have done it.
If they have a planning commission, I'm sorry.
But if you look at, if you look at planning commissions, if you look at our ordinances and everything, I searched through them, I couldn't find anything that addressed boat ramps, uh, whether they're allowed or not allowed or what they have to do. The only thing that, that is in the plan, and when the planning commission comes close to this, is driveway. Uh, is it a driveway? Not exactly. Uh, it's really not even exactly a boat ramp, because I should want to back my truck up with a boat in the back and try to get in and out, so that I don't have forward drive.
How do you get the boats in before?
But I, but I'm not getting into the details, but it needs to be looked at. I don't have anything in our current code to address boat ramps. We don't have anything to do with water anywhere in Columbia, so I don't think anybody's ever worried about it.
And I think it's safer, sir, than people carrying their boats over the rocks and.
I agree with that one. And I'm into disorders, I'm, you know, the noise ordinance, the dust, the this and that, I mean, it's water. I drive down these roads and I, these farmers run, you know, they're exempt from everything, okay? With the dust and everything else that blows around, you know, if we put the sign up that says, you know, don't, you know, don't live near here because we use sprays, we use this, we have dust, we have this. I mean, there's ordinances for that too, okay? And I'm tired of hearing about noise ordinance and everything else. I mean, these are electric motors, they have electric motors on the lake now.
So, they're not going to use any, uh, gas-powered motors?
They're, they're just idling. They have to idle a lot we don't want. It's like a no-heat zone, they're going to idle to the, to one buoy to the next buoy, and it's like a shotgun start. You know, they're just, it's a fishing tournament, nobody's really fished the lake before, even these guys that fish all the time, they wanted to come in ahead of time to try to do, you know, a little fishing, find out where the holes are at, you know, basically. And, you know, it's like, I can't believe the amount of energy that we have put into this as far as meetings and different things to help with an organization or at the school, you know? And, and there's so many times I just wanted to say, you know, Hartland, we're just going to build a town and forget it. But I'm not going to do that. We got sponsors that are raising money for this, for the school. I mean, you know, this past, me, my son, my grandkids and everybody else were down at the park, I mean, they worked their tails off cleaning out park, I've been painting and doing different things. They've done it for, I don't know, fifteen years, I've been down and I've watched and I helped, and this year I couldn't make it. But I'm just saying, they have done stuff for this community, they're part of this community. I don't know why everybody's fighting so hard against it.
I don't know if they're, I, I think they just.
Their meaning.
Right, and I think they just want some answers, that's all. And if I live there, it, I'm sure it's a great event and Hartland Christian will benefit greatly, I don't doubt that one. I think just as citizens that, that live there, they just want some answers, that's all.
Mr. King, I've called Susan Rock, the vice president of the Arrowhead Bay Association three times today. I've talked to the Arrowhead, Arrowhead Bay Village Association, I'm sorry, yeah, Arrowhead Bay Village Condominium Association. Twice a week for the past month, I've talked to all twenty residents at a meeting they helped, met with them. Three days later, we had, or weekly, we had a meeting on a Saturday at the women's club. I've talked to, within the past forty-eight hours, I've talked three times to the Back Bay Association, and I've met with them every other month for the past year and a half as far as their board. Have not been invited to meet. I told Susan Rock, you know, we're not sure, you know, she just said, I'm not sure if we get the other meeting, and pushed them for two or three weeks about getting the other meeting. Rather than meeting Wednesday, it's for a landscaping committee, okay? I said, that's great, and then invite me there, give me fifteen minutes free time. You come to these meetings, you know, Larry Pinnell, he's talked more at these meetings to me than he has in the past year and a half, okay? So.
I threatened, I threatened him.
I asked for the proper insurance information, I've documented it on April nineteenth, April thirtieth, May third, in July, and then August twentieth again, through certified mail, okay? It's beside the point, it's civil math. However.
And that's the problem we're having again.
However, communication is not our issue. Communication is our issue.
We're getting into the civil problem again, and council can't handle that. Dan's going to look into, like, as far as, uh, anything, as far as the city's concerned with it, he'll check into that and he'll, he'll investigate that and he'll report back to us. As far as the civil stuff between the property owners, there's nothing we can do about that. And to sit here and talk about this for hours, it's not going to go anywhere. So, I hate to waste a lot of time and energy, and I know there's frustration on both sides. It's, it's not going anywhere here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to convey that all aspects of communication, myself on my part, my self is on my part, I pass my part regularly. I've communicated that when door-to-door with the entire Back Bay neighborhood that I was water from last year, and I've tried to work with Southern Association as well. Um, the, the Arrowhead Bay Village Association is very easy to work with, but communication, I am all about communication, I'm completely open, both my, when I go over there, I tell exactly how, and what we're going to do. We're not hiding anything, I expressed them, I'm moving boats on Thursday, talking cheap class today. Thursday at three o'clock, I'm moving a paddleboat, for instance, that is on the water.
They know you were putting the driveway slash boat option?
No.
Did you communicate that with them?
No.
It's, again, it's not their property, and we did it primarily to access the waters, from access point, from the force and trespassing, the illegal activities on the water, you know, the, the, the nighttime swims, the, the people out on the island, the boating over here that have thousands of permits, um, we're trying to, you know, prevent, uh, criminal trespassing on the water. So, that's.
Of course, I know, okay? And we're getting, you've made, you made a comment on this, okay? I've worked all day, I do have a job, and I work my butt off, okay? I worked all day, I ran home, took a shower, I got a call that I should come down here tonight, I don't really want to come down to council, and you guys know that. I am not a meeting person. I came down because I heard that I better come down to speak tonight because there are probably going to be a few people that are opposing what we're doing. That's the one reason I'm here, okay? I mean, we're good people for the community, we've done, we, I mean, everything we have done, we said we're going to do, we fulfilled it and did it. You know, we worked with this council, we worked with city administrators before when we had problems with James County Trace, we got thrown on hold for two years as far as starting Old Sabre, you know? And I was asked to donate dirt to the, um, park for that football field, we put all this